In your packets you have the minutes of July 27th, 2015, regular village board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, a motion to accept is written.
Motion.
Okay. Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Jones.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Present.
And Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 8/115, in the amount of $44,182.12. Accounts payable, general fund, $65,835.61. Water sewer fund, $34,747.07. Giving me a total accounts payable of $100,582.68. Are there any questions on any of the payroll bills?
I have a question.
Okay.
Question, I believe it was three meetings ago, I had brought it up. And I had asked about where we take the village vehicles and things for repairs. And my answer was, we spread it around.
Okay.
And I see again on this bill, we are still going to all automotive for $16.17. Just curious on why we're just going to all automotive and not going to anybody else.
I don't have an answer for you. I don't know what, we'd have to pull that bill and find out what the vehicle was. Yeah, there they are. Let's take a look.
This is why you're reading them.
Steve Walsh is searching for that.
Uh-huh.
The $29.98 from constituent outreach. Is that for the phone app?
It is.
Isn't that who we're using for?
That, yeah, because what we did, it was originally going to be billed monthly. And then I spoke to Marcy, the treasurer, about that because the company had asked. They typically bill on an annual basis. And Mar, the treasurer, had stated that she would rather do it on an annual basis. So they billed it for the...
Since we're paying them, that should be up and running soon.
We have all of the information to them at this point in time. We're waiting on two things from our website to go to them. And then I think I was waiting on two headshots from trustees. And those are the only missing pieces of the puzzle right now. Just a couple pieces of information from the website.
Good deal.
But everything else I've submitted to them. You know, all the business information and everything, and all those modules are done, ready to go. So I would say hopefully in the next, you know, sometime soon, we'll get a little bit of information left to them. And then they'll go into, it's like a test mode period. Couple weeks, but it should be up and running.
One was for the Dodge.
Very short.
And I apologize, I'm one of those...
No, you're fine. I was gonna send that a reminder, so...
And I'm sorry, what was that?
The one is for the Dodge Caravan. That's the one that we use for meetings and stuff. One is a Chevy Impala, the 2011. And the other one is for Ford Groundbuck.
Okay. I will speak to the department heads again and try to get that.
I noticed.
Right.
You had your vehicle...
Yep.
There and things, and I just think we need to spread this.
No, I agree. I totally concur.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
Any other questions on any of the other bills? If not, a motion to pay the payroll and pay the bills as presented.
I make the motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee H.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. H.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Public comment and/or questions on any non-agenda item?
I've got two.
Okay, if you could give your name just for the record.
My name is Lisa Fredericks. I own the Arapet Bar and Grill. It's come to my attention, there's two things I'd like to talk about. One is that I... Thank you. I feel like there's a echo going on here. I applied for a music permit for outdoors. Now, your codes are very confusing. And I thought I had to just get the M license to play music, which I could have a band, but that is just indoors.
Indoors.
Okay. So now I applied for the amplifier. I'm only gonna use it for two months. And it's $250. So I was wondering if there's a way of prorating this because, I mean, even on a regular basis, I'd only use it for six months at the most.
And normally, and I may be wrong, but maybe somebody can correct me, the amplifier permit even, is that for a set period of time or is that per event?
The, the one she's talking about, the 250, that's for a whole year.
That's for a whole year.
The individual ones are 25.
Okay. Is that a calendar year? The 250 is for...
Yeah.
Or a year, or a year from the time that you take it?
No, no, that goes by our year.
Okay, our fiscal year.
Yeah. Because when I send out all of the liquor licenses and renewals and the business registration renewals, these establishments that need those, I send those with two, so they can be renewed all at the same time.
And there's nothing in the writing of that, that it's prorated, it's just...
But we, if you wanted to make an amendment, we could do that.
What's the feeling of the board in regards to that?
I would make a motion that we amend that to...
We're gonna have to put that on, we're gonna have to put it on the agenda...
Yes.
For the next meeting. So we would direct that to be looked at to...
I, there's other villages that do have that.
So we can do it based on number of months would probably be the easiest out of the fiscal year.
Probably, actually it'd be better because how many, how many outdoor events do you have throughout the winter?
Like Drolly, they have that loudspeaker. So they use theirs all year, all year.
So we could send that back to be on the next agenda.
So what is our fiscal year starts?
It's April 1st.
April it starts, yeah. But I send out the renewals for everything at the same time. All of the business registrations, liquor licenses, amplifiers, stuff like that.
And see, I was understanding that the M license covered all the music, even indoor or outdoor, when I got this. So this is why it's coming now and not earlier.
I just think that we, we are, we are supposed to be a business-friendly board, business-friendly village, which I believe we are. And we would need to do whatever we need to do to assist any...
So I guess my question is, and I'm just thinking out loud, so on April, April 1st, when an establishment declare, are they gonna declare how many months they want the amplifier permit or... I mean, that's gonna make it a little bit, I'm just trying to think, I'm thinking a lot...
I think it would have to be either six months or 12 months.
Yeah, I agree.
To make it easier.
That would make the most sense.
Well, I would say quarterly. I think quarterly, if you say, so if somebody comes in in May and says, "I want a permit", it goes till the next April 1st. And it'd have to be the whole year and they have to pay. But if they came in after July 1st, they could pay for nine months of it and start over again the next year. Does that make sense? Because otherwise, you don't want people coming in and saying, "Well, I'm just gonna come in in July every year and get that permit, so I save a little money." Because that's what I don't want to do by month.
Right. But it's gonna create, it's gonna create a major administrative...
What if you just said like on a new business, prorate it because you're just starting it now, and then after that, it's an annual thing for everyone? But if somebody comes in and opens up...
Because in reality, yeah. Why don't we do this? Why don't we let the committee talk about it, which this would probably be administrative oversight committee? We'll have to have them come up with a plan instead of sitting here trying to hash it out. Let administrative oversight take a look at it and bring it back a recommendation to the board for the next, for the next meeting.
Okay, now the application you filled out will be on the next agenda.
Okay.
What's your next planned event?
Well, I'm planning a, I have a jukebox outside for the speakers for outside. So I like to do it on weekends, but my main thing is going on is I'm hoping to have an opening, grand opening, September 12th, so...
And you're on the next agenda.
Yeah.
So we'll have administrative oversight, we'll meet...
But we're not meeting.
But we'll have, we were planning on having an administrative oversight meeting at some point in time. We wanted to have the treasurer there. She wasn't available this Wednesday, so we're gonna try to come up with a different date.
Alternate date.
Yeah, an alternate date to meet, so...
Sounds good.
We'll pull that together.
Okay. My second thing is, is you have that community thing going on?
Yes.
My pla, I talked to your wife and she said that I don't have to do like a stand, that I can have it set up where it may, because I'd like to give out, you know, pass out some gift certificates, drawings or whatever. But I'd like people to come into my place. But my place doesn't open until 11:00. And you guys open, start at 8:00.
Yeah.
So I don't know what I would have to do to get a special permission to open early and maybe have a breakfast there for people who want to come in and check out the place or they don't have to even, you know...
Yes, chief.
Only restriction for our opening is...
Liquor.
Sundays.
Oh, Sundays, okay. So you can open on Saturday, whatever time you want.
Okay. And is the liquor still, like if wine, someone wanted a Bloody Mary, is that up?
Only on Sundays.
Sundays is 11.
Sundays is 11 for all alcohol. There is no...
And this is on Saturday, right?
This is on Saturday.
On the old days, some of them used to open very early.
So you're, you're good there.
Okay.
But you can't open before 6:00.
Before 6:00?
Yeah, there is a, yeah.
You won't hold me at 1:00 before 6:00, so... Okay, I just didn't know how that all worked and I just thought some people may not open later, so I wanted to bring that to attention.
That's perfect, good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, Maureen Vormit, Peatone Public Library District, but I'm here for the Farmers Market Committee.
Okay.
We were having a meeting across the street. A couple questions. The water bills, are you able to do advertising on those? No? Okay. That should step one down. Second question, they're thinking of doing a walk run on August 22nd. What kind of things do we have to line up so that we can do that? It'd take about three miles.
Right, we'd have to get a route approved.
Boy, you're really, two weeks, you wanna do a three, a 5K?
They asked me to ask. When they say, "Don't shoot the messenger."
Well, you know, when the high school does theirs, they plan it months and months ahead of that for the music department.
Does that, does that require, that requires board action?
Well, not necessarily for, but a 5K is, you know, the last, when they did the last run for the Blue Devil Run, they had a one-mile walk for the walkers and then they had a 5K run for the runners. They had a short path and a, and a walk path. And the problem is, on the 22nd, you have everything going on downtown and I don't know where the staff will be to make sure the roads are safe for other things going on around the...
Because that's gonna require some street closures and some traffic control and...
And otherwise, stick to sidewalks, it doesn't matter.
There's, you won't find enough sidewalks. The 5K or that distance of a run is pretty short notice to put one together, number one. And number two, for the police department, we're already on an event downtown for the community days.
Right.
And I don't have a, over a mile of staff.
The police department and the fire department both are committed, you know, to be bowling with the kids, yeah.
So we don't have this.
Somebody asked me if we could do another...
I was gonna say, pick another, you know, pick the next farmer's market, you know, and tie it to that, and then that would give us a little bit of time to, to work it in. And, you know, hopefully that would bring more, you know, down for that market. I think this market, hopefully, you know, we're gonna have a very good crowd and another hook for the following market would maybe be a good thing to get more people down there for the first one in September.
Okay, that sounds great. And I'm gonna plug the library. August 20th, yes.
And you may want to talk to, recommend you get all the music department at the high school, because they establish their own and they advertise that run through a bunch of their runners magazine groups. So they have a pretty good turnout, but there's a lot of work to it because they have volunteers on every corner to show the run path. And that's really where it gets to be difficult, because now I, I'm not, you know, I sure don't have the people put on every corner, but the music department did have anybody involved. So there's a lot more to the run than just marking the course and say, "Go do it."
And we want it to be, and we want it to be safe.
Yeah. A lot of people are involved in that run for the music department.
It wasn't meant to be a fundraiser, it was just gonna be something...
Sure. But you, you need to have people out there to help the runners know where to go.
Okay, all right. August 20th, at the library from 5:00 to 7:00, we're having Governor State University Small Business Department come out and do a program on social media and how to improve your business. So if anyone's interested, they can sign up at the library.
August 20th at 5:00 to 7:00?
Yes, at the library, and they can sign up.
Very good.
At the library, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right. Reports of committees, chief's report.
Not really, sir.
Okay. Engineer?
The sidewalk program is likely gonna start later this week. I don't know exact date yet, but that's, we just got the contracts back from them, so it should be starting soon.
Good.
Any information on the traffic signal? Any updates?
The traffic signal, we're going through the land acquisition process right now, repairing the flats and soon getting them submitted to IDAT for approval. We're just plugging along and we're not really sure if it'll happen next summer, depending on how long that process takes with the negotiations, hoping.
Any updates on the sidewalk for me to know?
Yeah, that's still the same status as it was. Oh, you were, were you here in that last meeting?
No, I wasn't.
Okay. We, we talked about it the last meeting, you know, that grant is, yeah.
Suspended.
Suspended, I guess is, is the nice way to say it. The public works committee, it's on their agenda for Wednesday night to have a discussion about that, about maybe a possible, another possible way of attacking it.
I have another sidewalk question. We're spending, what, about $52,000 this year?
Yeah, it's right around there.
Over the last five years, how much have we averaged?
$50,000.
$50,000.
Since I've been around, it's been about $50,000 a year. Correct, we didn't do one last year.
Anything else, chief?
That's all.
Okay. Right. No old business, so we'll move on to new business. Item A, home occupation permit, John Bavara, 400 West Corning Avenue, J and G Decorator. Mr. Bavara here? Not present. So in your packets, you have a home occupation permit application. Again, John Bavara, 400 West Corning, interior and exterior painting. Hours and days of operations, 6:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Saturday. No customer parking needed.
How many employees does he have?
They did not send. And this is not something that they're going to be actually doing after those?
Well, my thought was that if you had a crew of 47 guys show up and park their cars for the, to meet before they go out or how they do it, I don't know, but...
They did not send.
And I don't believe that's a question that's on the application, it just says customer I was hoping maybe he would be here and answer any questions.
And I told him specifically there would be questions.
Yes, so I mean, if the board, yeah, if the board does not want to act on this tonight, without him being present, we can always table it, it's up to the board.
I make a motion to table it. Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Jones to table the home occupation permit application, John Bavara, J and G Decorator.
Can we make notification to him that he needs to...
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, he was told that it was prudent to be here, but...
Is this all they have to fill out to apply?
No, you got it.
Is this all they have to fill out to apply?
For home occupation, because normal home occupations, it's for something like, I'm running the office part of my business out of my home.
Right.
That's basically what a home occupation covers.
And that's possibly what this is, but it's difficult to tell from the...
I wonder if we, you know, could add something on there about if there's any parking, if they plan on parking a commercial vehicle in their yard or lot or driveway or, you know what I'm saying?
And typically, that's, typically the commercial vehicles are prohibited by zoning code.
Right.
Yeah. But, you know, the nature of the business does raise the question.
Right. But that might just be informative more than anything else. Where they say, "Yes, I'm gonna," well, they say, "Well, no, you can't do it." You know what I'm saying? Or, or maybe put on here, "No commercial vehicles allowed."
Right, just like you do for the business signs. Signs are not allowed in residential areas. You could do the same thing for the commercial vehicles, so they're on notice.
Yeah.
That would probably be the easiest.
Right.
And we have, we do have a motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Jones to table.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. H.
Item B, the Peatone Historical Society is requesting $5,000 from the management and repairs of the mill attached. There is an email that was sent to me, kind of shows what they were looking at along with a dollar amount attached. We have with us Mr. Steve Hoffner from the Historical Society, so I'll let Steve get up and talk to us.
Hi, everybody. So we're looking for is, there's the bid you have, this estimate, to do, split it up in a couple of different things. One was to take care of and rebuilding the front door and then the cedar shake shingles on the, the front of the, lower front part of the mill. And then also rebuilding and replacing the doors on the east side. Some critters have really eaten up the doors and some raccoons get in there and then start tearing up things inside the mill. There's a couple places that had problems with leaking into the mill, with the shingles, the cedar shakes are getting old and brittle and need flashing. So what we're looking to do is do the one part you have on the bid. It was in there for the $3,300 just for doing the doors and so forth this year. And gonna go ahead and hold off and wait till next year and then start doing the shingles on the upper part. So if we were to go ahead and do the, the village pays for the doors this year, and then we'll come back for doing the shingles. And then the Historical Society's saving up more money. And then right now, we're looking at doing four sides of the upper part. They're each at $3,300 on the quote. So we're, you know, over $30,000 to do all eight sides to go around the mill there. So at this point, it'd be the $3,300. And at the last meeting, came up with, what if we were to kind of beef up the one door way on the west side? So it might change the quote just a little bit. So we're looking at $3,300 and maybe change it by a few dollars. I mean, I wouldn't think it'd be more than a couple hundred. So we wouldn't be going after the full $5,000 this year, just be, it'd be definitely something less than $3,300 or less, less than $5,000.
And I did speak with the treasurer, you know, and there is, the $5,000 is in the budget for this. And typically what we would do would be, they would submit bills for the work after it's completed to the village, and then the village would pay the invoices. It wouldn't be writing a check to the Historical Society once the work was completed, then we would pay for that work.
And with the, the estimate, I did contact two others for estimates. One never did get back to me with an estimate at all. And then one else, one other estimate I had was just under $4,300 for doing the same thing with the doors that I have here with, the bid you have here at $3,300.
Don't we normally budget $5,000 a year?
Yes, and it is in the budget.
So this $5,000 is not an addition to, it's just $5,000?
Correct. That is correct.
Who is work construction? Where are they from?
He's the guy that is on 50, like across from Drolly's. He's doing some work on his house right now.
He's putting in a back addition.
An all, you know, all season room or whatever there.
He's a licensed contractor in the village.
Yes.
Has he done work for you before? Got the money, it's in the budget, we'll make a motion.
I mean, does it need to be approved?
Doesn't need to be approved then.
I think it's, I think it's okay to go ahead and make a motion, because we are, it's been allocated in the budget, but we are actually going to spend it, so I think it's a good idea to have a motion.
I'll make a motion. Second.
So a motion by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Hupkey. Do we want to put a, not to exceed...
Yes.
$5,000? I think it's probably the easiest way to do it.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. H.
Thank you. Item C, Knights of Columbus request permission for Intellectual Disabilities Fund Drive, 9/18 to 9/20, 2015, at various locations in the village.
Now, they did have on their letter, they wanted to do intersections. They're not allowed to do intersections. And I know I've seen them out on Route 50, but that state, that's not allowed.
That state, right. So just, once again, the Knights of Columbus Council, 11232, request your permission to sell Tootsie Rolls in the village to raise money for the intellectually disabled. This year's drive is scheduled to Friday, September 18th through Sunday, September the 20th. As in years past, our intent is to distribute the candies at all key intersections and outside local businesses. We'll be contacting local retailers for permission to distribute at their locations. Last year, we were able to distribute a total of over $5,000 across the following local charities. St. Colletta's, Good Shepherd Manor, Illinois Special Olympics, Down in the Southland, and Park Lawn School. We look forward to your approval. Thank you for your continued support. So this would be in the village, typically they're at the local businesses doing this. They're not on the streets in the village. They are normally at Peatone Wilmington on Route 50, but that's a state road, which is not under our jurisdiction. So I would ask for a motion to approve this request for them to hold their fundraiser, selling the Tootsie Rolls in the village at various local businesses, not at intersections.
Motion, second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee March.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. H.
Yes.
Item D, create a commission to organize a Christmas in the village, one-day event. I believe you all have a copy of an ordinance. What this ordinance is doing is creating a commission, which would be kind of a branch of the village, you know, it's under the village authority. The commission would be appointed by me, and we're actually gonna make a, a small change under 33.86 membership. We're gonna take the six members, but not more than 12, and we're gonna change that to seven members. We're gonna change that to a solid number of seven members. So this commission would be appointed by myself, and this year, we're gonna be having a one-day event on December the 12th, Saturday, December the 12th, to a one-day Christmas in the village event. So there'll be a lot more information on that as we move forward. I'm not ready to name all of the people to the commission tonight, but what I would like from the board is for them to adopt this ordinance, giving me the ability to form this commission. All monies that are raised by this commission, the idea is to seek sponsorships, you know, from local businesses and residents if they'd like to contribute. That money is, goes to the village, goes to the village of Peatone, and then all invoices or any, anything that needs to be paid, out of that money flows through the village treasurer. The village treasurer is actually the treasurer of the commission, so all monies go through the village.
I'll make a motion.
Hold on, hold on.
It's not funded at all by the...
It's not funded at all by the village, no. This is strictly going to be fundraised, you know.
Local businesses.
Solicited, yeah, solicit to local businesses and any residents that want to become involved in a financial, you know, way can do so also. Again, a lot more information, I'm kinda blowing out of this. So this would be ordinance number 15-10, an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 33 of the Code of Peatone, adding a Christmas event organizing commission. Motion by trustee Hupkey?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hack.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Item E, Comcast Cable request extended solicitation in the village from 8/15/15 to 10/15/15. Current, current ordinance allows three consecutive days per year. We've been contacted by Comcast, who is, we have a franchise agreement with Comcast. Normally, in the solicitation ordinance, they are limited to three days per calendar year, but they have asked if we could extend that because they're trying to canvas the entire village, offering special deals or whatever as far as with the Comcast cable. I personally don't have a problem with them being, with a franchise agreement with them, you know, extending this.
But they have already used their three days.
No.
No?
No. But they're asking for it to be extended, so when they come, they have the ability to cover the entire village, which they don't feel like they can do in three days.
You're saying that they may have special deals or whatever, why can't people just be on the phone calling and talking to them on the phone instead of being bothered at their homes?
That's also a possibility.
I'm just saying to go past the three days.
Right.
To give them their three days.
Solicitation means allowing them to knock on doors?
Correct.
And what does the franchise agreement do for the village?
You get a tiny sum quarterly, and that allows them to put all their wires in our easement and have the cable company in.
That, that's already there.
Yes.
Did you say we get a tiny sum or a tiny?
Tiny, tiny.
Did they say why they were asking?
Just time, and Kevin, go ahead, because Kevin's...
When I talked to the gentleman, he actually contacted me about it, he said, "When Comcast gives them an area to canvas, they give them that area for 90 days and then they have to move on." And he said, "Every other town that he's contacted to do this, the minimum is always six months." He said, "Most of them are six months to a year." He said, "Peatone, for some reason, is only three days." So he just asked if we could do it to that 90 days, that way it covers what Comcast is expecting him to do.
And it's been three days for a number of years.
I don't know how long it's been, three days.
Yeah, I would assume for a number of years.
Eight-ish, maybe?
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I would just caution you, if you're gonna, I understand they have a franchise agreement with you, but if you're gonna make exceptions, you need to be prepared to make them for other groups as well, so that you're not discriminating based on...
When's the agreement expire, sir?
The franchise agreement? Oh, I have no idea.
I, I can't give you a date, it runs for years.
Yeah, they're typically five years.
Yeah.
I would think this is something that would be covered in the franchise agreement when it gets...
Yeah, I was curious whether there's anything in there about their rights to advertise or anything.
I, we'd have to pull it out and, and read it.
Do we get a percentage of the take? Is that part of the? Something I would suggest, if we authorize them to do this, is that the people be well identifiable with some type of, I mean, you give them a three-month span, and anybody with bad ideas could, could we take advantage of that situation? Whereas if they get the proper, I don't know, identification easily.
We also should limit hours and days.
Yeah, that's usually all covered in the solicitation ordinance.
What's the hours?
From 10 to 7, no Sundays.
I would shorten that.
Oh, yeah, that's, five to seven is when families are together, having dinners, and it's kind of like family time, don't want to be bothered by sets people.
And the days are getting shorter, it's getting darker earlier. I mean, this goes to the end of October, it'll definitely be dark by 7.
Does this have to be, go ahead. Does this have, I'm sorry, does this have to be something that has to be decided today, or can this go to the committee?
We don't have to decide anything today.
The committee has to answer all these questions.
Right, right, their date is on there.
For the next, for the next meeting.
Right.
Well, I was gonna say too, I mean, it'd be nice if we looked at the franchise agreement, first of all, see if there's anything in there, because if, if there isn't, to be honest with you, I'm opposed to, I don't like people knocking on my doors, so.
Yeah, and if they, if they, if they talk people into more service than they really want to, it's, utility companies knocking on your doors, that'd be a good thing.
This is, this is why I'm asking.
No, then that's fine. Well, why don't we go ahead and table it, then? A motion to table, we'll take a look at the franchise agreement. If somebody from Comcast wants to be here at the next meeting to talk to us, you know, that might be a better approach to it.
The guy that contacted me that actually was pushing for this is a Peatone resident, so I don't think it would be a huge issue to get him here.
And he was gonna be on the agenda tonight. Yes, I have his...
Okay. So if we just let him know it's been tabled, we'll pull the franchise agreement on, take a look at that also. So, sure, a motion to table. Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Bowden.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Correspondence, communications petitions. Again, Community Day, August the 22nd, Saturday, August the 22nd, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. downtown, from Main Street, from Second to First Street will be blocked off. I think right now, we have over 30 vendors who have signed up. We also are having the community-wide garage sales. I think we're like at between eight and 10 addresses so far for that, that have been sent in. Police and Fire, Bowling with the Kids at the Bowling Alley from 10 to 2, Youth Safety Day at the Peatone Bowl with the police and firemen bowling with the kids. Farmers Market, 8:00 a.m. to noon in front of the Legion. So, lot of, lot of stuff going on, should be, should be good, looking forward to that. Anybody else have anything?
I have a question.
Yes.
Talking about the mill here before, the village insures the liability on the mill?
Can we own it?
We do. Do we insure the mill?
Yes.
The structure itself?
Yes.
How much is that insured for?
$200 and something thousand. How do I know that off the top of my head? I just finished that schedule this morning.
Any other questions? When's the mill, the Mill Fest is September the 20th?
September 20th.
September 20th, so.
That's a Sunday.
That's coming up fast also. Anything else?
I'd just like to make, let everybody know that on Sunday, August 16th, at 5:00 p.m. at the Peatone American Legion, they're gonna be adopting a soldier. Be nice to come out and show your support.
Is that a coining, or?
Coining, yes.